I'd like to lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, the rich and the poor, a nation under the individual liberty of justice.
So we have a letter that came in that I sent to all of you about the sewer request from the property on Egg Street.
Right.
I don't know if you wanted to discuss that. If so, we could add that to the agenda. And there's also been a town hall use request from the Politt Historical Society.
Okay. All right, we can bring that down to new business.
Sure, that's what I was thinking.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Anybody, everybody look the minutes over yet?
Peg TV there last time.
Yes, I believe Peg TV was here last time. Are you thinking for the others in attendance?
Yes. Artie?
I was just going to make a suggestion, and this is really your call, but the minutes, when they're set out, they cover everybody who spoke, but they don't really elaborate on anything that was-
And they don't have to.
They don't have to.
They don't have to. We've done a lot of research on the minutes, and Kristen has it down. All they have to just say that you spoke, and that's it, and none of the, none of the-
Yeah, I think it would be more helpful if there was some elaboration.
No. Nope, not, that's not our policy. We've had, we've discussed this quite lengthy, and we've tuned the minutes to the way the state recommends, and we're very happy with that. Thank you. Does somebody want to make a motion on these minutes, or?
I'll make a motion.
A little second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go. Carry. Pre-requested is nothing, right? Announcements?
None.
Beautiful. Zoning administrator?
I received nothing myself from Jonas. I also received nothing official, no official report from the planning commission. I don't know if Tom?
Your meeting was last night, so there's not really much to report from the planning commission, Tom?
No, we're still working on the same as what we were before the mud laws.
Okay.
Conditional uses and articles that have, so we're still in the discussion on that. Nothing really to present.
Okay. Thank you.
Potentially some village overlays that some other towns have done, other than the residential that goes across the outside that would help the DRB with lot sizes and a bunch of things that are unique to the villages that wouldn't let them buy outside. That's coming.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Keith?
I have a lot. What's your plan for town meeting? I'm just, my plan is to get some numbers that are current from Julie and be prepared to answer questions.
Right, and that's, I mean, there's really, I mean, the budget went up because we have to buy material, and that's all the rest of it. We, we've got all the usable material out of the gravel pit, and we have to move forward with, and we have to buy, you know, the top from either Hartford or Wallingford.
Yeah, I just think we need to be prepared to answer questions.
Yeah.
So, a lot of people are aware, but there's, I'm getting questions all day.
Well, I'm sure.
I'm suggesting that, coordinate, meet with Julie, and I'll get it up to date with what we spent this year, and then just make next year to happen, and go from there. We're just ongoing to drive.
Yeah, I think the key thing is going to be to, you know, to have those numbers of like, when we redo the road, how much per mile it costs and stuff like that is important, and how much just to tune up a road, you know? Each load is about... A hundred and fifty bucks or so?
What?
A hundred and fifty bucks a load, something like that?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Plus the miles, yes.
That's a round number, and it-
That buys the material.
What's it get you, fifty feet, not even?
Plus the length of the truck if you want it.
Yeah, so thirty, thirty-plus feet.
If it's a top dress, that's not really minimal.
Right. Exactly, so-
It might get you forty feet, but you're only eight feet wide, and you've got to come to a wide road there, and you've got three of those to get across that forty.
Right, yeah, that's it. Exactly, so I think, I think key points like that, that we kind of just take for granted because we've been around it, that a lot of people aren't, aren't going to understand without a light explanation like that. I mean, you think about it, it looks like a big truck, but it ends up this much, you know? But that's what it takes to, that's what it takes to keep the roads up.
And Leon's excavator, where is he going to be there? If we get a break in the action, we might do something right there just because we can.
Right.
Quick and convenient during mud season, and we're not able to do some other things, it would be nice to at least knock off a stretch here somewhere.
Sure.
There would be less, less demands in July and August when-
When everything else is going on, there's not much, I mean, you can't graze in it much, so you might as well be filling it in with slate, huh?
Yeah, with anything going on, getting some brush, cut some trees, stuff on, it's pretty good.
Right. So what's, what section Joey Pliss goes like from?
Well, we could start at the New York line and come back pretty easily from-
Right, start right at the New York line and just-
The bad spot up through by Ken Norman's and, you know, would be something that's done and behind us going into the busy season. And, I mean, we discussed, we're going to be spread thin already this year, and I had said mud season might be our window of opportunity to do something when we're not-
And would Leon provide the excavator operator?
Well, I would, that would be my suspicion. I've just approached him, I had an iron-
We kind of need it to be that way, right? Judging from-
He would load us, and then we would probably, we may have to do something with a machine or a flat that-
With a machine. We could really, we could really make a lot of headway fast in such a short haul.
Right, and it's something that's feasible with a truck, a guy with a truck.
Nobody around there has a machine, do they? Yeah, all those are leveled.
Leon probably does.
Right, but I'm just saying, none of those quarry guys have anything that-
I don't know what they have. I could, I mean, I could look into it. Joey doesn't have-
Joey doesn't have anything, but I didn't know if-
Pedros may have something.
If Pedros has them, like you said before, maybe they'd be willing at least to do, to move a machine down there and, and level a bunch, with three of you guys hauling, you could make really good headway.
If they are hauling, they could bring their material right to the-
Right.
You know, it's just something that's in the works.
That seems like, seems like a good direction to head.
If they're losing, they'll continue that, so.
Yeah, that seems like a good direction to head. Tom?
I talked to P Pedro, he'd be more involved than Keith.
Okay. And Keith has had some conversations with him too, so maybe we can try and pull that together, it looks like. Looks like the wind, I think the window was the right window.
Just take some pressure off. It's, honest answer is it's probably going to be a struggle to get through everything on our list if we don't have additional resources, you know?
I get it.
So we're going to get what we can, so it's just a bonus if we can get that done earlier, not rob time when it was, when we're busy.
Mm-hmm. Right, exactly, so, okay. And you want to, you could work a little bit on Kelly Hill, you're hoping to get that?
Mm-hmm, and the other one that was on the list is up through by ten some on that virtual, that stretch from-
Yeah.
Mill's driveway up through-
Right.
Really needs to go to the first driveway at Lauren Axelrod's, and then skip, and then get up, up to Dave Clark's.
Yeah.
You know, must-
Right.
From there out through, it's a choice. If we've got the other end of the road in good shape, from there is a choice.
Right, because that gets everybody pretty much up in that area out, so that makes good sense. Yeah, that section up by the sawmill's nasty.
I mean, those were the ones that, and then we bumped Sawmill Road last year too, so if that was to work in at some point this year, or even a portion of it, it would-
Right.
And that, those are the ones that are on the list for this year.
Right. Okay, that would work out. The, the switch road would be pretty easy haul from, from Hartford, so that would be able to top us that well. Okay. So, anybody else have any questions for Keith?
What, I noticed, I went up to speak to Chip this morning, of course he wasn't there, but I noticed that the road's kind of gone by the way of all things again. You seen that? Kelly Hill? Kel, the, you know where Chip put all the stone, right at the base of 133? Well, from Michael Mason's driveway right on past. I don't know if it's, I, if somebody's logging, but it's also Chip's trucks are coming out of there loaded, or going in loaded. So, I mean, are we going to address that issue before it gets to be in an impassable state again, or what do you think?
I don't know that that's the problem area of that road. From the gravel pit out is the part that stays reasonably well. It was broke up today at, right at the blacktop, but I didn't go out the road at all, so, um... Yesterday I was out that road though, and it was now all tore up.
It was tore up this morning. And I was there at 8:30.
All the way from-
Not all the way. There's sections of it that are, just take a look at it tomorrow morning and see what you see.
How much stone did you want to do from Kelly, Kelly Hill? Where did you want to start and end?
Oh, we were talking about doing the stretch up Riley Roberts' Hill and up around the corner there where Tom and Gerald has had all the complaints.
After the gravel pit.
Right, really, it starts between the two farm driveways there at that covert, goes up the hill and around to the brow of the hillside, zoning levees on those. And that, that's the part that really goes to pieces when it does, so. But I'll look at that in the morning, but I, that, it does break up right off the blacktop there, usually, has every year, but beyond that, that first stretch of road has been reasonable. Sometimes a little sloppy right by Kevin Mason's, and sometimes a little bit past my sister Jan's driveway, but the rest of it is all maintains, you know, fairly hard.
Thank you.
I don't think they're chucking logs out of there already. They've logged it in there, but I don't think there's been any lat log truck actually.
I, I didn't know.
Only a lot I know of is on the white road at Chris and Steve Waits', and he's supposedly, you know, watching out for the road, so. If the water's running, they don't, that's my agreement. If it's froze though, and if it's not froze, then wait for it to freeze, and I honestly think he's got most of his good stuff all logged out of there. I don't usually have a lot of issues with those guys, they're fairly, you know, they're responsible enough, so they check with me and-
Now, if the road's wet, they can't get around where they're going anyway, so.
Right, right, right. And they may go in at four o'clock in the morning when it's frozen and get out and be dawn or something, you know? That's usually the rule, is if the water's running, you don't, you just stay off it, so.
Do you have a question for him?
Yeah, you had mentioned getting some, what, eight, ten load of stone to-
I, I said, yeah, I had mentioned it a couple of meetings ago, which we haven't gotten to any, but-
Okay, I wanted to go over to Ferguson's.
I mean, it froze back up, and it was not with snow, so we just didn't want to put it down, but we may very well put some. I mean, I had that discussion just here tonight with John, he's got a spot up there. There's a few others around.
Because Ferguson's again is in need.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Keith, or? All equipment's holding up fine and?
Yeah, I mean, my, well, minor things. We probably are going to have to put an oil pan on the holding rack, that's all.
Did we put one on already?
We put one on it already, yes. This is the second one since 2013, so.
Seems like it's bad.
What do you mean?
Seems like it was just a couple of years ago.
Yeah. You don't put a very good finish on them, or what?
Don't know. They do not look bad when they come. They're all powder coated and everything, they look nice, but now, this one, the newer truck has a corrosion resistant top stainless steel, but it's not, but, so, this is what we ordered for this one this time. It wasn't available to us when we did the last one, so. So they recognize they have a problem, and they're trying to do something, whether it lasts better or not, I don't know, but that's not anything that needs to happen tomorrow, but it's, it's in the works. And, yeah, we've got other minor issues working on. Got a junky box door out back here, it's a correct amount of oil and place and where it's all corroded up. So we've got that, we'll put that back in in the morning and be ready to go if we get any storms, so.
Okay. Anybody else? No good, all right. Well, thank you.
Assessor's report. Ongoing work for 2020 GL. We have been doing inspections on permits for buildings for previous construction where we have only first snap complete, or we will continue it throughout the months of March if necessary, and first part of April until we've completed all the inspections. Karen will be attending PVR courses, my Vermont tax grant list cleanup on February 26, and a current user training on February 27, both in South London, there is no fee for either of these courses. Assessor's office, Lisa's scheduled for March, Monday the 9th to Monday the 23rd, weather permitting, and Karen will be in the office second, 16:30, and as necessary to keep current. Counselor's memo, assessor's office, tax map proposal needs signatures of all present. Assessor's office report.
Tax map proposal you have right there?
What's that?
This tax maintenance proposal.
I don't know much about that. I assume it's, it's a-
Is it with Cartographics?
Yeah.
It's like a contract.
It's, it's an annual contract, like it keeps it open, it's, they alter any changes or whatever's happened in the previous year.
It's a maintenance agreement, basically, right?
That's right.
Sixteen hundred and fifty bucks, so we probably should just have a motion that we approve signing this.
It's part of your lister's budget that they vote on at town meeting, I believe. It's included in their, usually is included in their budget.
I'll make that motion.
We'll just, it, it's probably just as well we're signing it.
I'll second it.
Second it. All in favor of signing a tax map agreement with Cartographics?
Okay.
Post? Carry.
Dave recalled to drop off area information regarding a handling citizen complaint by VLCT. He provided a copy of the VSA Chapter 20 Title 151, Internal Security and Public Safety. This information will be kept in our policy ordinance binder, also provided at Act 56, Conduct Report Form, and Criminal Justice Training Council, Air, and the Partial Policing Act. Would you like to elaborate a little bit on that, Dave, or?
Well, legislature very much said that any police agency, and because Bill and I are certified, we're considered a law enforcement agency, now has to have internal affairs to handle any complaints against you, and that's what that stands for. That's pretty much it, um, the academy. Any, any minor complaints or to handle, there are certain classes that are in the paperwork to look at, um, you have to refer them to the academy. They're, they're basically the nascent, whether they get your certification or just slap your hand, I guess, um, okay, it came down from off here.
Okay. We have all the appropriate procedures and stuff around file, so that, how we-
Yep, it's right there in that packet.
Okay. I'm not sure where the packet is. Anybody have any questions regarding that? Okay, well, thank you for coming over. Okay, and Artie sent the letter. Let's, let's top that down at unfinished business. We'll get through these reports first, please. Have a wonderful evening, Deb.
Counselor's here with memo. Three warrants to be signed. Everybody's supposed to warrant, so we'll accept that.
Okay.
I would make a motion for the warrants, to accept the motion, or, yeah, to accept the warrants.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry.
Blue flame came at the end of January to service and inspect equipment in both the garage and the Westwell wastewater plant, see attached.
The only thing I see is that one, one heater needs a switch replaced at the treatment plant. Heater number three needs a limited switch replaced. That's all I see with that. Anybody else want to look at the report?
I'm going to.
You have that corrected, I guess. Do, do you want to send them an email and just ask them to replace, do that, correct that word, please?
Blue flame?
Blue flame. Do you have their email address?
I do not know, but I can get it. I can always call them.
I'll send it through.
Okay.
What's that, three million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen seventy-five? Adjustment, current use, how's that, ten thousand, eight fifty-nine fifty-four? Adjustment, current use pieces, four thousand eighty-one eighty-one. State payments, four twenty-three, one forty-seven sixty-two. Taxes collected by treasurer, two million seven six eight zero four zero point three zero. Delinquent, one sixty-four eight fifty-three ten. I'm not really sure where that stands, so, that-
Delinquent's not too bad.
Delinquent.
That's up towards two fifty.
Not too bad.
Zero would be- Stuff is really highly under control.
Right.
State numbers are-
That they, they just tell you what it's going to be, and you like it?
Right, right.
Okay? But the delinquent, I was curious about that, I was thinking that was decent, so good. Urgency management?
I don't have anything.
Correct. And health officers, nothing.
Correct.
Wastewater- Wastewater treatment plant. The... We had an issue. What was that? Two Sundays ago, right? And they had no flow on Saturday and they had no flow on Sunday, so they called me. And Keith came over and popped a couple manholes and we found a plug just between the last manhole in the sewer treatment plant. So, um, Jill and got her husband.
I guess they just used their jet, right?
Yeah, they brought down their jet, because she said, "Well, do I call who?" I says, "Well, you're already involved in it. Bring your jet down." They're coming from Moncton. It ain't hardly any farther than Rutland. And she knows all about it and they only charged us eight hundred bucks. That was pretty good for a Sunday, I think.
Well, yeah. Yeah, we're lucky it was, you didn't have to pump.
Right.
Pump all of those manholes out to get in there to work or something. Work right from the headworks.
Yeah.
Because it was the last manhole prior to the plant that was clogged, so they could just fill the bin from the headworks that way up and do it right from there.
They had...
They must have had a pretty good gusher with that.
Oh, she said it was running pretty hard for quite a while. But it didn't take them too long. It broke up pretty easy. They didn't have to fight too long. They were only jetting for maybe half an hour and I got a text and said that they'd broke it loose and it was running in and everything. And the plant was taking it and they hung out for a while to make sure that the plant, everything was taking it and it was accepting it all right and stuff like that. And the other thing that they had was, they had a high E. coli count and the technician there got messed up. She cleaned all the UVs, put them back in and grabbed a sample before they came back up to intensity. So, she didn't wait. She didn't wait to time. So, they've...
Carrie is getting done, I guess.
Yeah.
So, they've got two, well, one has been there.
Right. Devon or something.
Devon is the one that's going to be doing it full-time.
I see. And Devon lives in Rutland or something like that?
Castleton College student, that's all I know. She's an environmental scientist.
Yeah, and I think Jill was saying, when I was talking to her with, that she's going to be based around Rutland area or something, working out of Rutland. So, it's going to be better because Carrie is up in Addison.
That's why she's getting done.
Right. Yeah.
To come down here and then she was going to West Rutland and then the first company back to Addison.
Yeah.
Two thousand eight Subaru was already got a lot of miles on it. She was wearing it out more than she was getting paid for it or something.
She's, I think, I think she's going to stay working for him but be working up there, is what Jill was hoping to keep him up, keep her up there closer and stuff. But that's, well, that's the two things with that going on, I guess.
I had sent that sewer letter to Julie and it's my understanding that I think she got it out to all of the users.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what the problem is. See, that looked like there was plastic and stuff that made the plug.
Anytime we've ever had a problem, it's been stuff in there that didn't belong.
Right.
One time it was cheap wrecked there, you know, that somebody made a plaster dam in the manhole. It's not, I couldn't believe it was frozen.
Yeah, she was thinking it was frozen. I thought, "I doubt it."
Never, I don't think it has ever froze. I mean...
Most of it's pretty deep.
Dealt with it twenty years now.
Right.
Twenty years or more before that, that it was in there. And I don't, to my knowledge, is, I don't believe it's ever froze.
Yeah.
And some of it is so deep that I don't think it could freeze, so.
It was good that it broke up easy, but we drafted the letters for the Egg Street people because they were throwing stuff in it that was kept jamming the pump. So, we drafted the letter for them explaining the need to...
What and what not to put down your toilet.
What's really considered waste. And so, we sent it to all the users after this event.
It was such a good letter, we sent it out to everyone. Well, it's a good reminder, you know, you never know.
Basically, the only flow that was getting was from the Egg Street pump station and Little Cost House beyond the old freight building. Everything else was... All of one fifty-three south of town and all the way out to Mickey Pliscus was not allowed to go to the plant. So, they were, that's...
It was hanging out, it was hanging out in the pipes.
Yeah, it was just going out.
We could have been bubbling by Monday morning, too.
Yeah, it was probably getting to the point where it would have backed up somewhere, not a problem, yeah.
So, that was, it was good to be done, to have that taken care of. Other than that, I've reached out to Wayne Graham and Elizabeth Walker from Rural Water regarding this proposal to do the study, this sledge study, and get their opinion on it before we pulled the trigger on it. I reached out to Paul Lander Chu and he said that he's already working with this engineer, Jenny from Hole and Tanner. So, he feels that it, on a different project, so he feels that it would be a conflict to make any comments, but he did feel that that was a very good direction to get the sledge out of the, then to try and not recirculate the sledge. And with aeration and stuff, we could keep it to a much better level and it would make everything work a lot better, he felt, too. Very happy we own the store lot, because that's what's going to have to happen to it. So... Other than that, that's about it on wastewater. Anybody else want, Frank?
This village overlay concept with the multi-units. For example, when we were walking with the planning commission in West Pollet a while ago, Eric mentioned that if you had a duplex, like Jamie had down the hill from me, the White Houses, if you had a duplex and you turn that into a single residence, which means you didn't have to pay too super. That you lose the grandfathering on that for a multi-unit. Because it doesn't have a half an acre there and you need a quarter acre per unit, which nobody in West Pollet can get. You're not going to get that there. So, that would be, that house is set up with multiple heating system, I think, and everything. But basically wouldn't be allowed under the zoning rules because of the amount of land needed per unit. So, that is inhibits anybody from buying that piece of property who would want to have a duplex there. Which, where I want to encourage sewer use is, so this is one reason why the village overlay concept would be a good idea to free up any spots that get clogged up in regards to having that go forward and, when it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. How's that? Older unfinished business. Marty, you wrote a letter to us?
At your request at the last meeting, I basically just, you asked me to summarize it. Carrie sent it to you. And do you have any questions on the letter or do you want me to go over it?
No, we went over it last week with you and at this point, it's, you know, we've made a, we've been working with, with a... I can't.
Relft.
Relft. And it's, it's, you know, I feel that we have a valid plan moving forward, so it's up to the voters to decide. I don't know if anybody else has a comment on this or not, it's...
I would just point out that after this letter was written late yesterday, I finally got correspondence. Mr. Nipps contracted found that he actually does have a fee and for the construction phase services. So, I did not know that at the time and then there was no reference to it in the Russell cost summary, which is already approaching two years old. But as I pointed out in there, there still appear to be significant gaps in the summary and differences in opinion about some of the line items in there. One of the most salient was, there was nothing in the summary that allowed overhead in profit, which is anywhere from ten to twenty percent depending on what a G C or a project manager would charge. So, that's, that's an unknown factor in this. And also, there was really no indication of how, if this were approved, how the town would administer it. Would it be let as a single general contract or would you retain a project manager? And there's no allowance in there that really relates to what these charges normally are. So, there are those gaps. And I know it's coming up, you know, into an election, so I'm not here to really debate with you what you should do at this point. This is a train that's on the tracks. But I just felt that I should bring it to your attention. And the only other thing I would say, I did attach, to not to belabor this point, the issue of snow guards on the roof. I had not remembered it, but when we actually did the project in two thousand and two, the school had snow guards on the roof. In fact, two people in town remembered the snow guards because they used to kick their football up there and it would get hung up. Those snow guards were removed at the time that the roof restoration was done in two thousand and two. And it was always considered a necessity that this be put on. And the irony of it is that the lack of snow guards was used as one of the primary motivators for this whole chain of handicapped accessibility to the building. Even before the discussion of accessibility to the mat weight room, the primary consideration had been the dangerous conditions of snow and ice falling on the handicap ramp. And this was cited in Meg Campbell's letter, which you have a copy of. I would also just note that there were inaccuracies in her letter on a number of points. And she was, I do not believe, a member of Preservation Trust when the award was given in two thousand and three. So, they're just, they're inaccuracies here and there's gaps in all of this. But the train is on the track. The voters are going to make the decision. But for the record, I'm here to tell you that, and no matter what, whether they vote this thing up or down, the matter of snow guards remains a critical condition. I have spoken, Mr. Watzke's letter was very clear. And I've worked with him for more than thirty years. His credentials are attached. We discussed the nature of the roof, the fact that it has a new metal edge, which he recommended, the ice and water shield below it, the valleys. All of these issues were discussed. He made a suggestion in his letter that protection just of the handicap ramp alone would be in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars. So, if you were to consider the back of the building, the front of the building, and maybe even the east side of the building, you're talking about fifteen to twenty thousand maximum, subject to bits, subject to competitive pricing.
We have all these, all these points that you've made, that you've well outlined, that we'll certainly be reviewing before any final decisions are made with any of this project. They're all, so that everything will be, these points that you brought up, we'll make sure that they're all be outlined and accounted for any hidden costs or anything like that, so that...
Okay, I would just ask if any board members have a problem with anything that is in this letter? Is there anything that they disagree with here?
Does anybody have anything they would like to comment to Mr. Crowe?
Well, I don't have Russell's, well, I do have Russell's somewhere. But there was some answer to some of your questions about Russell's, about profit, in their estimate. And I think we also have to realize that this is your opinion of this situation and we have to take that and the town has to take that in. And I think you've had plenty of time to give your views, both here and other places.
Yeah, maybe more time than anyone would like to have heard it, and I recognize that. But it's more than a qualified opinion because it's an opinion by another licensed architect. I have spent a big part of my career doing historic preservation, teaching historic preservation to other architects.
Well, it's our decision to judge that. Whether your credentials are for what we should agree with or with the architect that we hired.
I don't look at it as, you know, me against him. I don't think it's a personality thing at all. I have to say...
The thing that worked is the ramp doesn't work. It's too steep. The water comes on it. It's unusable. You know, we're not doing this out of fun.
But all of that can be rectified at far less than initiating this project as far as the ramp is concerned. And the ramp...
Well, why should we take your opinion on something that doesn't work?
Well, this is what I've been trying to get across to you, is that you can protect that ramp against snow and ice and even rain with gutters in the back there. All of this can be protected at far less money. Why should you take my opinion? Why should you take my opinion any less than another architect, any other architect's opinion?
Because we had a hired architect that came and did our work.
Okay, and I did the original building and from day one...
And it doesn't work and the mat weight room is not accessible. And you stood there at the opening of the mat weight room and praised yourself right and left.
No.
Yes, I was there.
No, I did not praise myself.
As if it was a Taj Mahal.
I did not praise...
Well, I think we've had enough discussion.
Yeah, I think we're going awry with the subject, so...
I would just like to clarify this. I never did the mat weight room. I was not involved in it. I've praised the finish of it, that's all. But it was never intended...
At this, at this point, at this point, we've heard enough discussion on this project. Thank you for your input. Kristen?
I have, so for the personnel policy, just one more quick thing before I go forward with the printing of it. There wasn't anything, we had decided to adopt things and then the whole 401K topic came about. Is that something that you would be interested in having included in that, in the personnel policy? Any mention about the retirement? Or is it still too new and we want to find two new?
We adopted that rule so it could be added in.
Okay, so just I would guess...
I mean, in my opinion. I mean, do you guys all feel the same way or not?
I guess I'll just need to get some clear...
It is, it is...
I thought we adopted it.
Yeah, we adopted it, so it's part of the...
So, I just will then need to get some, something in writing because I never, I sifted through and I didn't see any motion.
Any actual...
Any actual motion that stated what it was. So, I would just need something in writing to be able to send, you know, to be able to put in and then we would have to maybe do, you know, we would have to add that to the amended policy. But I just had that moment. I was about to click send on the, "Hey, here it is and let's start the printing process." And then Julie had mentioned, she's like, "Oh, should, is that something we should consider?" So, I guess maybe I...
I'll say so.
Okay, so I'll get with Julie on, because I think that she has maybe a grip on what the, just because I know that there are qualifications for, you know, you need to have certain eligibility's in order to participate in it. So, I will get with her on that and I'll run it by you, by you all.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Take a look at those.
How big are they anyway, Scott?
Thank you, John. Eight by fifteen?
Sizes.
No, different sizes. Do you have any use for those?
Temper, they're mats or concrete mats?
They're concrete.
They'd be suitable for a...
Underlayment for a road?
You approve them? How many is there?
Hundreds.
Hundreds?
It's never to be an integral part of the line.
I have a picture of some things that may pertain to a road.
Oh, okay.
That was...
Some underlayment mats that, I'm curious if Keith would have any. I gotta open up this stuff.
Yeah, it's fine. Just...
Yeah, now they're...
Like, like...
And then, okay. Yep, yep, they're...
So you could just throw them down over the muck?
There's a better look at them. I wanna get rid of them, get done with them.
Where are they?
They're in the ramble. They're in the little lake field.
Oh, wow, I've seen them actually.
And they wanted, and they wanted to move for us.
Yeah, well, we should pay attention to that.
Oh, we need to then. I just, yep.
Or are they?
It's the bypass project in the little lake field.
There you go. Sweet job.
Yeah, I'm telling you, yeah.
You could crisscross them if you don't, here, just one more. This is a close-up look at it.
Yeah, they're on cables and they're flexible. That's what they lined the bypass to the river with down there.
Now they want to rid of them right away.
And they're contaminated though.
No, these were clean.
This is, this is the US Census thing right here.
Okay. Now, what's passed the...
Initial boundary validation program. Oh, Deb Hopkins. So give it to her, leave this for Deb. Slack board trainings. Anybody wants slack board training?
There's more, I'll show you more.
My road needs a couple loads of...
Couple of them, you got some spots. Throw in a couple.
Build your own corduroy road.
That's right. Get cobblestone, come to the cobble. Get some cobblestone. I wonder where that material comes from.
John loved the project. That's what I was heard.
Why don't you go over, why don't you go follow through on it? We got you on it. This is the road stuff, Kristen.
For me?
Sure.
For the roads department?
It's after Valentine's.
Yeah, after...
Oh, it's our highway mileage. This is the key.
There's a couple more pictures. Light it.
Just light it.
There we go.
I'm low on the praise here. What do I do? It's in a mug slant here. That's also what I need. One more sunburn?
Nobody coming in.
You can talk to that.
Can you do this by a thing?
Okay. Is there anything else under old or unfinished business?
What about this?
I have something for new business.
Waste water, the Katrina.
Oh, um, the sewer, so I guess that could be...
Tyler and Ward, the little...
Oh, wait, 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 yes, yes. Okay, I was thinking Katrina, it wasn't fucking on me. Okay.
So this is the email.
Yes.
So...
That's their letter. The one thing, there's, there's some information in the sewer sheet that explains how that all is based and what got, what got charged and all that stuff. I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Because the Board of Abatement had a hearing in August and are to abate that wastewater fee. And the Board concluded manifest error was not on the part of the listers, but because of the lack of full disclosure of the seller with regard to the absence of a lateral to hook up the system. The Board concluded that the request for the abatement is not due to 24 VSA and therefore does not approve abatement based on inability to pay. The Board concludes it is reasonable proper to abate the wastewater user fees with penalties and interest in the amount of $1,620.95.
This is a little pretty...
House next to fishing game.
Yeah, she's gotten an issue with the water running off straight into the... You said the abatement ruled in their favor?
Yes, waived their, or abated their wastewater fees and users and penalties. What her letter is now requesting is...
Permanently waived?
We purchased the property at 13 Egg Street as is. That is without any well or other water source and no direct hookup to the town sewer. As discussed in our abatement hearing, the sewer hookup from this property goes to the Fish and Game building, not directly to the street or town sewer line. Further, whatever that means. We request that the wastewater users fee be permanently waived unless a future, unless at a future date the owner of 13 Egg Street installs a well or other water source for this property based on these facts and the precedent set by the abatement granted due to incorrect leasing.
They're gonna do just about what we thought at the abatement hearing. They're gonna sell, sell the property.
It was a first sign. If you tie together, then, yeah, okay.
I think you'll see where it's proved like we're done.
Or part of it. The state, whatever it is.
Westfall rumor, is it?
The highways.
It came out of this side. Of course, you know. I don't understand, John.
So, anything that's going to be discussed then tonight?
I'm trying to find how it's spelled out in the sewer ordinance, how it spells out which business, building and in the direct, the section of the sewer ordinance that addresses the buildings.
There's a, Kristen, there's a letter here from the property valuation and review. From what I understand of it, they, they thought our coefficient of dispersion was out of whack. But then they corrected it and were within tolerance. And so there's no, no difference for tax, taxing. There were, looks like they were gonna add 1%, but then they changed, they went back withdrew it.
I'm mostly just wondering if there's anything I should just be tipping, tippy tapping away at on my keyboard, but...
You're not, you didn't write all that down?
This is not an exact transcript there.
So that's, that's the sense I make of it. If Mike wants to transfer it onto Karen to make sure that she's in agreement of it.
That's what I would say. Lester should get it.
Okay, but this is not to do with Egg Street?
No.
Okay.
No, that's...
I will give this to the listers.
That's the taxing in general, state or townwide.
Let's, let's see how this is, okay. Mandatory use of public sewers, Section 404. The owner of any house, building, or properties used for human occupancy, employment, recreation, or other purposes situated within the town in a budding on any street, alley, or right-of-way in which there is now located or may in the future be located a public sanitary or combined sewer of the town. It is hereby required at his expense to install suitable toilet facilities therein and to be connected such facilities directly to, with the proper public sewer in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance within 90 days after the date of an official notice to do so, provided that said sewer is within 150 feet of the structure to be served, unless undue hardship would result. In this case, the property owner should request in writing a deferral of this requirement. They say human occupancy, it's not human occupancy. Employment, is a building used for employment? Or recreation?
Not being used at all right now.
It's not a business. They intend to use some sort of a business, right?
It was at what, it was a studio. So it was like, it was not a business. It was a place where they would go and she had a bunch of, she's a seamstress, so she just had a bunch of her sewing machines there. But it wasn't a business that people would go in and out of. It was, in essence, a sewing room outside of your own home. Workshop, yeah. But it hasn't been used, I don't think, in over a year.
I think that Don was paying a sewer fee. That was one of his complaints for years.
Probably...
He paid sewer taxes, and all the time he had his little sharpening shop there.
Right, because it devalues the property, should we not allow for a hookup? If payment was not made for that and then all of a sudden someone wants a hookup and demands a hookup, we could inherit quite an expense to install a hookup there and never have benefited from, from someone owning it.
Do we know, is, is there, is there a potential for a hookup there?
I believe it was tied into the, Frank probably knows, to the fishing game. But I, and I think that's what it's referred to here.
But if there's no water or anything in there, why did they have a pipe over into the fishing game?
Because it was just a pipe that went into the cellar fishing game and joined into the fishing game, except it went out into the, to the town, to the lot sewer line.
From, from that little building?
Went through the fishing game. And that was always a thing that came up in the meetings. It wasn't, there is not a direct hookup from that little building into the town line.
But we don't know if there's, there may be a T on the town line to accept a hookup, but it was just never hooked up.
That would be on a map someplace.
Right, it would be on the sewer map somewhere.
In which case they would have to comply with the hookup according to the 90-day regulation that you've seen there. The, what I recommend is that you table this pending finding out if there's a contract on the building. Because if the owner of the fishing game takes ownership of this now, it's their option to combine lots and be a continuous lot situation in which case the issue may just go away, maybe mute because it's, it's all an entity. It's one, one, one thing. Which should, all, all that consideration you're talking about now and great stuff would go away. Potentially.
I think there really, there really needs to be a little bit more consideration.
My, my question is, was there a pipe installed from the fishing game to, toward that building or connecting that building as part of the original installation of the town sewer? So that the company that was contracted to install the sewer could say, we installed a hookup to, or a T to every building in town? It was just part of their contract was to put some sort of a connection or a way to, should, should the owner choose to put in a well?
Financial liability was on the owners to hook up within the period of time that you're talking about.
There's no way we could have allowed one place, one sewer to go through another.
No, but this was, as long as I can remember, going back to the sewer and the fishing game, there was that line. And apparently somebody said, okay, this is how this building can be hooked in and be legal. But, but this was definitely a cob job thing.
But why did they even need a line in there if there was no water or anything like that? Did they be dumping now?
Well, this has been a topic of conversation for a long time, going back years with, on owning it, he was complaining about it. Fishing game had this pipe going through the cellar. They really didn't, if they cut it off, would they have a liability? There was a lot of issue, talk about it, but everything was just left pretty much as it is. Again, I'd say table this right for now because you don't have to rule on it right off the bat, potentially. And if there is a contract, like again, like Tom is alluding to, the purchase, it could, the whole thing could just go away. If it's just one, if it's...
You might better have someone take a copy of that page so we don't have to go through that again.
Page?
Take a screenshot.
Page six.
That could be forwarded to the people in response.
They, they address, they mentioned that section in their original letter. So I think, because...
So they want to waive the hardship?
From my understanding, through the request that was put through me, they wrote this letter based on conversations had at the abatement hearing. They were told to write a letter.
But can you please, like, to Kristen?
But that's a sense on this.
Right.
Yep, Tom?
I can confirm that there is a pipe coming out of that white building shape going toward the fishing game, but I can't confirm that it's in the fishing game. I don't know if it's hooked up there or not, but there is a pipe going out that...
Out from one building to the next. But that's, that's not a legal sewer pipe, so...
And I don't think it's a, it's just, it looks like it's not even a hard scheduled PVC. I think it's a light wall PVC, but...
It's like drain pipe.
That's what I think it is. Because the heads, because there's more than 10 feet between those two buildings. But there's... between those two buildings. But there's that culvert that came down through the center of that, where we had all the issues with the water over there, I don't know how many years.
I guess we have to stop at the sewer plant and look at the map and see if that, if that building shows.
A T.
A T, in the sewer line.
I'm sure Don used to complain at the firehouse.
Right, I can remember him.
Say it, because there's a T out front, they tell me I gotta pay.
They have to pay.
And I don't know if somebody in the fishing game reported, transferred, and disconnected all that. There was talk about it, but I don't think anything ever happened.
I don't recall any pipe going into the fishing game that came from that other building.
No, I do.
You can't.
No, but fishing game folks might have disconnected it.
So we gotta, we'll just have to tell them.
You can't put a sewer in a building without water.
Right, there's no need for it, and you can't, certainly can't run your sewer through somebody else's house. That seems like a good deal. Wow. So, tell them that we.
We need some more, we have to gather some.
We need to do some more investigation.
I will do that.
So, it's page six in the, in the chat, in the ordinance, and the ordinance is, is online.
Yes.
You can get it.
I think they have it.
On the town website, so.
They meant, they, I think, just I, from the brief reading that I did of that email, I think they mentioned, referenced that, so I think that they know.
I'll try and make a note to stop, to the, to the sewer plant and try and figure out if that is indeed.
And I just have one more, oh, never mind, we're still on old business, I've got some new business.
Okay, is there any other old business? That anybody wants to talk about? Nothing? Okay, so how about your new business?
So, the Polat Historical Society has requested to use the Town Hall Auditorium on Thursday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty, for a discussion with Mike Barbieri regarding Polat and the Revolutionary War. That day happens to be freed up, so as long as the board is all right with it.
Sounds great.
I'll add it to, well, I've already added it to the calendar, figuring you would think it was a great idea, so.
Cool.
Why don't we have it?
Would somebody like to sign?
John filled it.
I shouldn't sign.
John, John filled out the application.
Chuck will sign.
Chuck, would you please sign? Yeah, conflict of interest.
Give that to Julie so she has a, the blue claim scan.
Oh yeah, you want to put it on her pile? Please, thank you.
Oh, this is, this summary of the Communications Union District, is this something?
It was in our boxes, but I didn't receive any other back information on it, so. And my other new business item is, so organizational meeting for us folks following town meeting? Would you all like to gather on, well, would our new twenty twenty select board like to gather on Wednesday, the day after town meeting, to do the organizational meeting?
That's what we normally do it.
Chuck, you and me are the only two that are guaranteed.
Is that a special meeting order, or does it have?
That's what I would.
Chuck and I, Chuck and I make the motion in a second, because we're the only two that are guaranteed.
Okay, wow. I feel like we need to have a special moment tonight, this could be it for us all as a group here. All right.
It'll be over.
Massacre.
So your motion is to approve the writing of a warning for the organizational.
Organization meeting on Wednesday night. So the Communications Union District, we'll keep watching this and see how that goes. Because they said we could join into this.
Yes.
Now, there's no, all I can think of is Burlington Telecom every time I start looking at that shit, I was like, oh, how's this going? But, has anybody talked to anybody any more than just the presentations about this? It seems like it would be a great thing to get better, better service around some of the areas.
We have value to properties, right?
Absolutely. Frank, what do you know about this?
What?
About this union, this C U D project with Rupert that's, that they're pushing to get all the Communications Union District?
Oh, that guy that was here?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know a lot about it, other, other than they're looking to push fiber optic and enhance the internet capabilities, and the idea was running on poles, and I can't see any sense in running stuff on poles, but if you have a big windstorm, or parafiber optic is so much more expensive.
I'll tell you why, you try digging in the road when you got them in the road, that's the pain in the ass, you know, the other, pole, top pole.
Or if lightning strikes them in the ground. We had a problem up our way.
It fried it up?
Fried it and they couldn't locate the.
Yeah, you, it's not like you can run a detector in.
Put this on Julie's pile.
So, but it, it's a movement in this state, it's, it's, a lot of people don't have, you know, adequate internet in many parts of West Polat, and if it's not P S L, I mean, Comcast isn't going out there, you don't have.
We'll just keep our, keep that open.
And they've begun to talk about low orbit, low orbit satellites again, so, so, sometimes.
Not, not that guy that was putting himself up in a rocket ship this weekend.
No, I don't think it was him.
You see that? Didn't work out so good. That's it for new business?
I think so. My only other thing is that for the organizational meeting, I might just send you my draft of the, oh, I guess, do I have to put out an agenda for it?
Yeah, we have to, we have to nominate a whole bunch of things. Fence viewer.
Deb will be there.
Fire call.
She has to swear people in.
Deb swears a sin.
Isn't there a template from last year?
I remember last year, I was like a little floundering fish and I did not know really what I was doing, because it was my first one, and I was like, I'm gonna know better next year, and now here we are. It's like I just got Men in Black, like blackout penned and I don't remember a single thing, so.
I'll get mermaid, I'll figure it out.
Still floundering, but put here. So, yeah, that's exactly. No, so it'll, I will, I guess I'll just check in with Deb, make sure that's all good. But I would ask that anybody thinks about, for our policy, rules and procedures, we had talked about some things that we would like to update based on our past year, so just mull that over, there's things that we might want to have.
Things that people get nominated for.
Oh, also, yeah, everything. So, it's a good night.
Somewhere in, in here, all the people, all stuff that we want to hang on the whole side. And we can kind of do it.
I'm gonna be looking into the, what's that?
AJ.
Took over my water.
Tom's got it.
I'm gonna be looking into the idea of a sand timer so that we can actually enact our time policies and procedures that we've set in place.
Perfect. So we got, the other thing, we got, planning commission and, and development review board, things that we have to do. Public, public health officer, no one wants to do that? All right, so we can, we'll, we'll just work through this.
Oh, yeah.
All right, and anything else?
Nothing else from new business for me. Onto the next.
Public comment?
No, we missed you too. We're still having just as much fun.
We missed you too.
Dismissed.
We got a hand.
Is, I select board up in, up north, I've been following their minutes a little bit here and around in different towns, and they will have a meeting and an issue will come up, and they will not adjourn the meeting, but somehow postpone it for another day in the, the next day or a week, a few days, and then reconvene, where it's not adjourned the meeting, so apparently they're getting around the special meeting warning process.
Can't do that.
That's what it appears to be for me, from, which is an interesting.
Yeah.
Technical thing, just wanted to bring that up. If anything ever popped up, you could probably maybe do that, which was worth investigating.
Yeah, I do know about that.
Versus going through that whole warning process to, to restart up another meeting is just a continuation.
What town was that, do you remember?
Callas, just.
Why don't you go up to one of their meetings and come back and report?
Well, I'm gonna report on something else that was interesting that I found out last week, is they had a store up there in Maple Corners, and it's a long-used store, the post office and the store, and it was up for sale, and the town may be purchasing that building because they felt it was important to have a store there and a post office there as a continuation, there's the center of that Maple Corners part of town, from a cultural perspective or sociological perspective, or whatever it is, there's, I imagine this is going to be voted on next Tuesday, but this is something that's interesting relative to West Polat because of the concept of, of owning the property, the town owning the property, and I don't know.
You got better plans for the store?
No, no, if any other place, if, if there was, if there was some ideas that popped up, there's lots of ways to creatively approach this where the town would benefit potentially. The other thing, so that's just, I'll, I'll keep you tuned in on that, how that might develop, but the Revolutionary War monument, monument, party was, they were there last night and they were bringing up, they, it had been the planning commission that, that whole monument thing and the, and the town green, and, and that sounds like, I don't see any problem with putting a stone up there, another stone in the space that you have out there, there's plenty of space for a stone to sit there and someone to mow around it. I really wouldn't see any problem in that if it.
Well, we, we at the Historical Society did not approve it.
Okay.
Part of this process is that we're creating with, with this speaker.
Momentum.
Well, or at least opening it up for public attention and to see people get interested in. They first wanted to move the rock from North Polat to here. Most people now see the rock as the best place.
It's an extraordinary historical thing, and, and what we heard last night was.
Be wrapping this up.
Making telephone poles and all this other stuff, you know, and making it really a pleasant type of thing. Kind of said, geez, this is a critical jumping off point for major part of the Revolutionary War, which is, it could be several dollars that could come in on this type of.
Nobody's denying that, it's whether the green should be a hall of monuments or green. We've got school kids, homeschoolers that use that as kind of a playground.
Yep.
And, so, I mean, that's a decision the community has to.
Moving forward. One way or the other, everybody's not against it, but they just want to avoid different ideas.
Little thing that I don't quite get either is you said no one would mind mowing around it, this, this kind of throws me about mowing grass, you know? Thank you for your comments, Frank.
Public comment is that last night at the planning commission, because Harry hasn't been here through the winter time, there was no chair, so the chair in planning commission elected Gary to be the chair of the meeting, but it wasn't worded to be a temporary chair, it was chair, so that Harry might have been replaced as the chairman of the planning commission in the next meeting.
I'm pretty sure he wasn't.
I was bringing up some of the processes.
We, apparently everybody's ready to go, but are we gonna talk about what we're gonna talk about Monday night, or are we not?
What do you got, yes, was the last thing that I wanted to mention before, before I was gonna let Ed have his moment. Anybody see anything in the book that, that we're thinking of that could cause us questions that we may stumble over because we don't really remember exactly how it all went down, or?
I'll be there.
Okay, perfect. It all, it all seemed appropriate at the time, but.
So the library's gonna have someone in there when they start talking about the library, library budget, someone's gonna be there to speak for the library?
Well, I think the library board is.
The library board's gonna be there, they're, they understand that they're, they're gonna need to field questions.
Yeah.
Well, part of the informational meeting for the bond, the requirement for an informational meeting is.
Is.
Doubling up with the informational meeting.
For that.
For the town. And so, I've been asked whether I should talk to our moderator and see what his plans are timewise, because we have thirty-one other articles to discuss, and I think that's one reason why we started it early.
We bumped it to seven instead of seven thirty, right?
Give it a little more time. I didn't know if it was my role or any role to contact him, but it, I guess whatever he has planned for, he's been a good moderator.
I don't, I don't have any problem with you contacting if you desire, does anybody else have any problem? If you want to, or we'll just get to the meeting and deal with it as it comes along like we do every other time, you know?
Okay.
Is he running for moderator for?
Yes.
He is?
Yes.
Kristen?
Just to confirm, while I'm all featured on, on the microphone, that the, the select board's report, the little bit, just speaking to your point, because there might have been some murmurings about town, the little section about just mentioning the fact that the library project is going to be on the ballot, the way it was worded is not saying that the select board is unanimously in favor of the project, it's just sheerly that the select board approved the project being put onto the ballot. So, everybody is entitled to their own opinions, it was not a blanket statement about what you're into, just letting the people know that they're getting what they want, which is their.
Their right to.
Their right to vote, so.
Thank you.
Just to confirm.
So do you have any, anything that concerns you, Chuck, you were looking at that, or just?
No. No, as long as there's.
I think.
People from the library that are gonna answer their questions.
Right.
So it's not addressed by us.
There's, there's basically two issues this year, there's, there's the increase in the road budget, and, and we have ample backing for that, it is, you know, it's a material issue, and it's, it's pretty much straightforward with that, and. And this project is, has a lot of facets, the library process has a lot of facets to it, and it's all gonna, you know, every, they have a, a lot of people that are involved in it too, have done a lot of legwork on it, and that's, and that's where we're standing.
I moved to adjourn.
Good job, Ed.
Good job.